We're gonna redo the indoor air. We'll redo that particular subslam sample. And we'll be out in that playground parking lot area, sampling the soil gas beneath the pavement. Well, those were the actual samples, or patients. They sampled within the classroom and the room.
So if they have to come back again, is this now our evacuation plan? Is to go back to St. Michael's just in case? This actually works. Is this the plan now? Is it going to be upgraded again if these guys come back and then evacuate?
Right now, that would be our best option, as of today. Again, we're thinking, for our child, we have to think of sometimes worst-case scenarios, unfortunately. And Plan A, B, C, D. But I have told people in phone conversations that if, you know, we want students in the most optimal educational environment, obviously safe. If students have to sit in an auditorium, instead of being in a building that's unsafe, that's gonna happen. So, I don't wanna use, you know, "We're gonna do whatever it takes," because that's the role of our office. So, I'm hoping that wouldn't be, you know, a great option.
I don't know what's gonna come out now.
I don't foresee that, based on our current plan.
Looking at the data we have so far, relative speaking, it's not high numbers. They, I didn't anticipate we're gonna find a problem because of what we're looking at subslam. And also, vaporists will enter the basement. So, an option for you may just be to not enter the basement. The first floor and the second floor, if you want. There are other options. We've got a good one, in fact, you can totally go somewhere.
Well, if that is a problem, are we going to use the filtration system immediately before we?
We would, yes. Again, you can't do something like that all night. But yes, the solution would be to use all the filtration system, so that the basement would be safely loaded up.
But yeah, I would want, you know, this is why everybody gets together, because then I would want, if that was an option, that guaranteed that the first and second floor would be intact. So I'm not just okay to, you know, but I would want the experts, that's why we're here. That's why they're answering your question.
How is this affecting the already used basements? Is this something that our insurance pays for, all the problems? Like, do you guys have to relocate, I assume there's a compensation, St. Michael's, do those still on, or insurance for it, or is it common?
I would think, as far as, we did look for local money from the budget for the four days we were at St. Michael's. Somewhere around $650 a day. Again, I haven't gotten an actual invoice, that was just conversations I had, because everything kind of went down quickly, getting county approval. You know, we really didn't want them to be out anymore, if there was a viable option. I think if students were their homeowner, we probably wanna, you know, just look into some other things. If it was, let's say, that facility, the difference between being someplace for a week, or, again, like I said, we have to think worst-case scenario, being someplace for months. Whether it be security, and then, you know, place to go for recess, et cetera. Right now, it's, we seem okay, but I don't know if all those questions have been answered in terms of insurance, because the DEP has said that there would be things at the end of the year as well, depending on what it is.
Yeah, again, anything associated with remediation, is that okay?
There was this incident at Washington, I believe it was last March, where the school was evacuated very early in the morning, and 200 pieces of coffee had been a result of soil gas back then.
I have not looked at any of those reports, but I believe that was, uh...
There was an issue with our boiler, and that was just that was faulty on the porch.
I was the principal at Washington School, actually, when that incident happened. It was actually an issue with our boiler. There was a piece that went faulty on boiler, and it was causing the boiler to actually physically shake, and that's why we evacuated the building, because we, at that point, in a moment, we didn't know what was wrong. Then, the boiler, the piece was replaced, and we worked, we could go back to school. No, no, that was miscommunication. The CO2 was never going on, it was purely just, the boiler was physically shaking, so we evacuated the building.
And I can just say, in my previous position, we had a potential stair. There was never any previous district carbon dioxide in the building, but I have a lot of experience with that, so I actually know little about that. And, you know, basically, if I'm not mistaken, you know, our buildings do get checked every year for those types of things, so everything is in place.
My family, but poor gases were found at my site, and was the science tested only to cause their building to structure? And another question is, the earth and the soil are constantly changing as buildings become older and older and older. Shouldn't all old buildings be tested at some point? Like, is this a yearly thing, or was it just before new construction was started? So maybe all these schools are old, and ground under uses are constantly changing, and, you know, there's work going on, it stirs up things, and, you know.
Great question. I would love to go to every school in New Jersey and sample. I would love to make sure that every environment is clean. I would like to know that the outdoor air in New Jersey is pristine. But there's no requirement. The requirement from what the state has made a law is called the Madden Act. So when you follow the law, you do a school addition, whether it's an addition or a new school, you follow the law. You follow code. That's the trigger that has to make sure that the environment that you're creating is safe for children. So, you don't just arbitrarily go around looking for a neon haystack at every single school, although we'd like to, we just can't. And I believe that, you know, I don't wanna speak for the DEP or the lawmakers, but it makes sense that when the district comes together and you vote for a referendum to spend money, that that money is spent wisely. And when the money's available, that's when you then bring it up to the new code and standards. And the new code and standards would allow you to follow the Madden Act to make sure that it meets the environmental requirements. So although we probably all like to spend money cleaning up the environment, we don't all always choose that. So, you want to put the laws in place. So, I hope that answers your question, but that's how we got here, is that... That's the trigger that got us to sample. The soil under the building doesn't really change, it's not moved. Groundwater, okay, it moves. Air, it moves. This school has always been a school. That's why we did this, put in our assessment, piece this paper on the history of the property. It's been a school since 1912. Nothing else on that property has impacted it, except for the neighboring properties, but things that have moved. The soil hasn't moved on and off, but the air in poor spaces has come and gone. The groundwater that's flowed underneath the building, at depth, has come and gone. So whoever was impacting that, that has come and gone, it's fleeting, it moves. But the school and the district did not create the source or the environment. The compounds that were detected, the first compound in the first sampling event on each building was trichlorophene, TCA, it's a degreaser. It's a cleaning, it's used at dry cleaners. It's also used at service facilities, things of that nature. That's what we initially found. When we did the confirmation, to review for confirmed sampling, we found the TCA in it, and we also found benzene, chloroform, and ethyl benzene.
Generally speaking, benzene, ethyl benzene are components of gasoline. We also find, so we find them usually associated with gasoline. Chloroform is actually, we find more often not associated with leaking water pipes or leaking sewer pipes, because chloroform is a disinfectant byproduct in drinking water. So we will often find it in chloroform, in the drinking water, or just from using chlorine leak to clean things, you form chloroform. So it's fairly common as a, as a background, and we find it, well, low level, but probably wasn't actually a chemical, still was a chemical. Vaporbursts can happen pretty much at one hour, so I think that's, we've seen it with, you know, hundred feet below ground, you're seeing a little football, kind of thing. So, it's, it's the concentrations in the groundwater are more indicative of the concentration in the air relative to distance. You excited?
Tested those four other buildings. Have anybody tested soil, where their building's been found, or been used yet?
Not yet. We will be doing additional soil vapor testing in that area. And again, we're gonna wait to see if that data tells us. We may come back and maybe do soil and groundwater in the area, and then, what we see, or what we're hoping for is to kind of point us in a direction, and it may point us away from the area of this situation.
Is this a normally staged construction process, or you would have done it? Or is this something that we should have already done before we started digging for the new school?
Well, that preliminary assessment is a requirement under state law, and it's enforced by the school development authority. So they're not gonna, like, give you money until you do this work.
You can't give a construction permit, although this addition, until I issue a response action, how it's possible? Until we go through that process. So, you can't build the addition, or the building official shouldn't give the certificate, the construction permit to build until I issue a response action. That can happen years in advance, but when we got retained to where we are now, that's the timeline of how we found it.
That's also remaining for the new school that we are having built, because they broke ground all day already?
Correct.
So that's all been in there?
I can't speak for that school, because I didn't work on it.
Does anybody have an answer to that question? Was the ground tested and everyone approved by the state, everything was done right? Was there a rule being built?
Are you talking about the new building?
Yes.
That's not our building. It's a town's building. We have nothing to do with it.
Don't we have something to do about it?
We have nothing to say in the building until it's built, and they decide to turn it over to us.
What if they say, they had to have that approved, that the soil was okay, and then to start construction on it, and then the school, is that a decision from the same process?
The Madden Act requires a school addition or a new school to follow the law. The law requires me to do a preliminary environmental assessment prior to receiving a construction permit.
Okay, so if I go with town meeting, and I'm asking that question, they have to have approved or what they've done between being or whatever, that the way is not town meeting?
I always, I always hope so, yes. It's a relatively new law, and it changed the entire DEP process. It created a privation, a license of a major professional, like myself. You may have heard what it was, and almost forget this here, because it's alarming, but it was called Kitty College. You may have heard of the news, but what happened was, they built a daycare, Kitty College daycare, on top of a mercury thermometer. If you weren't doing the school addition, would this have happened? No, it, nothing would have happened, because there's no law requiring you to unplug. If, the soil, oh, sorry, the gas under the building would have been, would not have been looked at. The indoor air would not have been looked at. There's no trigger, there's no law that requires you to look at it. As I said before, we'd all like to look at every school, but...
Well, this is where I was saying, you know, the children that were in that building, I would say eighteen years, they thought they'd come, just to try to keep it, but then they're grandchildren, that's why. But, these children would have something bad, although it was in that building, was that what I said, right?
I understand your concern. And could it? I don't have an answer, and I don't think anybody has an answer to that time, but I can tell you from what we found now, there's no reason to believe there was an impact back then. If what we found directly below this father's building right now isn't coming into it now, well, I think they may have built this school pretty well back in 1912. So, yeah, it may not have all the new code and technology of the vapor barrier and the piping and the passive system, but I can always speak for what we know now, and since we haven't found it now, from what we've gone through, I guess we just sort of have faith that it was protected back then. But none of us are gonna know whether there was an impact or not. You don't know when you drive down the turnpike, if there's, you breathe the air, it smells bad, okay, what is it? We don't know, we drive down the turnpike.
Does your firm, if you're working in this, have proactive tested, tested schools and buildings on an annual, five-year basis?
No.
If we want to be, what's your professional opinion as to how frequently should we test? Based on surrounding properties and...
I wouldn't sample unless you have to sample by law. I have a number of districts saying, "Well, we have somebody spraying stuff on our field, because they're a landscaper, can you sample the field?" And I say, "Well, if we sample and there's, you know, some herbicide or something above a standard, are you ready to shut your fields down? Because the landscapers donating is time to maintain the field, and doing it free." So I think you always have to wonder, is there a trigger? And are you ready to deal with the consequences? If there's not a legal requirement, what's the purpose? There are, there are some, you know, it's not, nobody's really going and just sampling indoor air, that I have clients that are just, "Okay, this is sampling," or, "No, nobody's, nobody's doing that." Do they do that in work practice? Not, when somebody complains, they'll come in and they'll check, and that's different, it's not DEP, indoor air is more regulated and more forced. I have clients that, you know, they put in a turf field, and I've told them before, "All right, well, sample the turf, because there's bad news about turf, and everybody has new turf fields." So, there's, it's a fine line, you know? How much do you wanna do? And what's, what's the recourse, how long to do that? Anybody else? I just wanna thank you again.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for that important discussion. Before we move on, on behalf of the Board of Education and myself, I wonder if we would like to commend Mr. Greco, Jamie Stevens, Joe DeCourseau, Scott Visick, Christine Bernardo, and all the teachers and staff and custodians, for the great job they did in moving an entire school within a couple of days. You guys did a great job. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Egan, we've kept you here a little bit longer than you need it, or want it to be. You're a reporter. Mr. Egan is our state monitor, in case some of you don't know. Yeah, he, he's gotta look, stood up.
Hi there, Mr. Egan. I'm going to be honest with you tonight, with just a few points that I think the public will be interested in. As you know, we're waiting for the deal with the deficit, and the most important thing to do, has to be accomplished first, is the completion of the audit by the district's certified accounting firm. Because we must be trying to determine the exact amount of the deficit. And that would be, once that happens, that I could propose to say, in the state, if it advances, how many, we'll have the exact amount, once they have to advance to the, to this district. We need the, yes, we need the audit to be completed, so we can determine the amount, exact amount of money of the deficit, so that the state can advance those funds, to clean up and pay off all our debts, or move forward. The audit starts tomorrow, and therefore, it should be completed within four or five weeks. And with the guys, the results of the audit will be furnished to the board in a month. There's still to be included some other aspects, of the financial condition of the 1718 school year, and that will also be then included in the final examination by the certified accounting firm. For this class, we're not based, I don't know, I know it's put on the website, we would be due by standard, standard reports. A filing report would say, verges the world banks and financial institutions, which stated that the bond rating is A-, it's an A-rating, which will help with issuing bonds in a referendum, to reduce the interest rate. In addition, the representatives from standard report classify that the district is stable. And there was a credit watch on us, which was removed. If the officials of standard are more confident that the district financially is moving in the right direction, I think it's good news, because we always like progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Anthony, you're reporting.
Tonight, sorry, in addition to what we spoke about before, those experts, professionals have now left, we want to go over our state assessment results from 1718. There is a requirement to do, to report the results to the public a certain amount of days, so we would probably be cutting it close to wait till October. So while I did have a little introduction, kind of presentation ready, I decided to wait till October to do that, it's not as important, it was just a little, little bit about me, kind of, the district moving forward, and kind of staying on the same path in terms of our curriculum, instruction, programs. So what we're gonna do now is go over our state assessment reports. Starting with the Florida, it's gonna be on there. I don't quite do so, better let me go. It'll roughen it. All right, so just that with me here, as we go through our report. So basically, New Jersey statewide assessment program, 2018 marks the fourth administration of the Partnership for Assessment and Reneges for College Careers. So it's 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18. So last year, our scores that we're reporting on, it was the fourth year of PARC. You'll probably notice, if you look at a lot of different districts, from year one to year two, a lot of districts had pretty substantial increases. Another kind of was a little bit of a lag, a lot of places stayed neutral, I don't really know off the top of my head, all of the others from 15, 16, 16, 17. And now it seems like everybody is just kind of getting used to the tests, and, you know, a little bit more prepared for them, and state's gonna change it against them, so. But we're not sure exactly what they're gonna do yet, but that's kind of where we're at right now. So students took PARC English, Language Arts, and Literacy Assessments in grades three to 11, in grades three to eight, Mathematics, and End of Course Assessments in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. So those vary depending on whether students take them in math. Probably hasn't changed since a lot of us have been in high school, that you, depending on what year you take a certain math, is when you take the End of Course Assessment. So, but let's be clear, there's probably gonna be some assessment in place moving forward. I think unless they haven't really, you know, held anything yet in terms of moving forward after this year, so we'll deal with it. We'll make sure we make the best out of it. Our teachers do a great job of preparing our students. And they do a really great job of not necessarily teaching for the test, because, you know, although we have to have students prepare for the test, we don't want robots either. We talk a lot about critical thinking and problem solving, and that's what these things are supposed to be about. So we definitely don't want to turn that into what it's not supposed to be, which is memorization, which is being prepared for the test. We want our teachers to be creative, you know, a lot of times I compare it to a dance class, or a sports team, or something of that nature, theater. You want, you know, our teachers to be independent, our students to be independent, we want them to learn at the same time. Students took the New Jersey Grammar Assessments in Science, in grades five, eight, and 11. Please note, this was the first yearly assessment, and it was a pilot. Data will therefore not be reported by the NJDO lead. So we'll probably get those next year. To really report on something, you need a baseline. So there's year one, and then you go to year two, you kind of look at the baseline. Obviously, with PARC, the first year, you were really comparing against other schools, against other states. There's not as many states now that are taking the PARC as there were in year one, it's kind of went down a little bit earlier. We're under 10 now, that we were talking about before. So you'll see some stats, I'm hearing it talk about cross, cross-state results, it's basically the other states that took PARC. So, and this report will be on the website, if you go, and we're in the process of clearing up the website a little bit, if you go on the homepage, on the left side, District Information, it's on there, there's a number of bullet points that will be in that area of District Information. So here's your PARC performance levels. Basically, it's one through five, it's exactly what you were thinking with the, level one is not getting even grade level expectations, level two, partially meeting grade level expectations, level three is approaching, level four is meeting grade level expectations, and level five is exceeding grade level expectations. I think one of the things that came up when PARC first came out was, is a three good or is a three bad? Well, it's not necessarily bad, but you wanna be a four or a five. So when you look at term, in terms of good percentages, good numbers, positive numbers, you wanna be a four or a five. So although three's not bad, it's still an area we wanna get our students into fours, and obviously, we want our fours to get into five, so that's... So you'll see here, grades three to eleven, again, you may have some trouble looking at this, if you look at it, it's going to be obviously as you get home, on the website, literally, you're just going to click a button when we're done here. Number of students tested, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen, you'll just see basically the number of students tested over the different years. This is something the state requires us to record out, and it's necessarily the most important thing, but it is a bit to tell, it's basically the number of students that are enrolled. Obviously, as you'll see later in the presentation, now all students are actually taking the PAR, some have to take alternate tests for different reasons. Go ahead, John. Okay, again, you're going to have some trouble seeing all this from your areas. The, you'll see it goes from grade three to grade eleven, this is just ELA, which is English, okay? So you'll see comparisons from two thousand and seventeen, this is just New Jersey, okay, this has nothing to do with Lindhurst, this is just in Jersey, two thousand and seventeen, which is really two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, to two thousand and eighteen, which is really two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. And you'll just see a percentage changes, all the way on the right, the percentage changed from levels four and five from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen. So you see throughout Jersey, in grades three through eleven, there were increases in pretty much every area, except grade five, which was less than a percentage point negative. So, obviously, it seems like students aren't getting used to taking this test. All right, so now you'll see a comparison of Lindhurst, actually Lindhurst's, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and two thousand and eighteen PAR administrations, average overall score, comparison by grade level. So a lot of times in these reports, you'll see percentages, but here you're seeing actual average overall scores. So let's just look at, again, may have some trouble seeing it, let's just look at grade three, district overall score, okay, this is English, if ever still on English, we haven't found some of that, but I'll tell you when we get there. Two thousand and sixteen, grade three, seven forty-six, two thousand and seventeen is seven forty-nine, two thousand and eighteen is seven sixty. So that's the average overall score throughout Lindhurst. You'll see from the last two columns, the next, the next is the state overall scores, the next is the cross-state, and I think I mentioned it earlier, cross-state overall scores are all the states that are taking the PAR, an average of those. In the fourth column, second to last, you'll see the comparison of the district to the state, okay, in English. Going all the way down that column, you'll notice that Lindhurst actually did better than the state average, in terms of all average overall score, from grades three through eleven, you'll see grade three, ten points higher, grade four, eleven points higher, so on and so forth. Some of the numbers are a little negative, you know, one point higher, one higher than the other, it's not really a big concern about whether it's positive or negative. And then you'll see a comparison of the district to cross-state overall scores, and you'll see that's actually even better. New Jersey does a pretty good job in terms of the PAR assessment.